Good morning. Let's call to order the Wednesday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty four. A work session of the Lower Southford Township Board of Supervisors. If everyone could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. This to our first public comment period, first and only for the work session. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be recognized? Name an address for the record. Name an address for the record.
In the or the guard. Been hit yet again.
We've noticed.
And it's also like.
Blocking the site, as you're saying.
We've reached out to Pendleton. Yeah, it is. And.
It was our problem. We just taking care of the.
I've tried to arrange a meeting. Manager and system manager for this this area. See if there's some other solution to try to keep this from happening, or this is a recurring problem. Or you're aware. Um, so I haven't had any success in trying to schedule a meeting. Uh, getting response from Pendleton, but I'll try again, reach out, see if uh. Uh, what can be done and in in the interim, maybe we can just push the guide rail back further behind curb so that it's not turning into the roadway. Not the same. Limited that. Portion of the problem.
Although it's Pendleton's responsibility and problem per se, it's it's still a problem for us and our residents. We're definitely pushing it. Doug has been working hard to make sure.
Also, about the rock and road bridge. And my question, I don't know. Should I even talk about them now or?
Okay, I have a discussion point, you know, for my report, but it's it's up to the board.
So what we'll do is let's go through the public works portion of the agenda. Maybe that'll answer some of your questions. And if not, then we'll slip in another public comment right after Doug. See if we got you covered. As I said.
Thank you for coming. Yeah.
Anything else? All right, moving on. We'll take a motion to approve the work session minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty four and or June fourth, twenty twenty four.
Make the motion.
Second. Moved in second in all my favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Both say nay. Oh, she carries. All it works, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to introduce our two new full-time employees. Next to me is Brad Neckel. Um, Brad comes to us from the the private sector. He works for a commercial spraying company. Brad has pesticide license, so which is going to be a huge benefit for us to to take some of the pressure off of Brent Albach, who currently does. All of our spring just about, yeah. We want Brent to be to to focus on other responsibilities and. Kind of be more project oriented and focused and leave the day-to-day stuff to just guys like Brad that can easily handle it. So. We're excited to have Brad on board. And next to Brad is Justin Taylor. Justin also comes to us from the the private sector, working for a a commercial concrete company. So we're excited about that, because we've got, we've talked previously about. Uh, getting up to speed on, you know, ADA ramps and and all kinds of concrete projects and the repairs and things like that. We think that that's right up Justin's alley and. We're expecting him to kind of take the lead on that and uh, and kind of kind of run with it. So we're happy to have him on the board. Gentlemen, these are the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Shelley, Mr. Kind of Man's not here, Mr. Bergman, Mr. Sharon, and Mr. Prowse, Judge Kaltski, County Manager. I'm Edwin, Chief of Police, and Light Beauty, Sergeant Director, Building and Go.
Be a name quiz later. Welcome, gentlemen. Welcome. Happy to have you.
Very proud. Thank you.
That's it.
Back to work, guys.
Uh, moving on, projects, uh, street light upgrade. We're still trying to get through the closeout process. Fortunately, we have a meeting in the final payments. So we still have that hanging out there, uh, hanging over their heads at least. Uh, garage lease at eight oh four Harleyville Pike, that's finally completed. Uh, started moving in this week. Um, at some point, there needs to be a discussion with the recreation authority regarding cost sharing of the uh. Um, Bartyville Road Bridge. This is the trail construction portion of it. Uh, we met with county roads and bridges. After uh. We saw their contract cost for the trail. Which was ninety-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Which is about thirty-five thousand dollars higher than we anticipated. Um, in discussions with the county, we tried to figure a way that, you know, maybe we could partner with them and. Do some of the work while they're doing all the parts of the work, uh, just to try to minimize our cost exposure. County's reluctant to do so, and I understand why, because. Uh, gets into a finger pointing if something goes wrong. Honestly, I'd prefer that they would just handle the project and not us not get in involved in it, because. It always seems to turn into more than what we, you know, anticipated when we when we do these kinds of things. But um, so. Regarding the cost, there was one, a couple of line items that were what we thought were kind of excessive. One was a clearing and rubbing. Which is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Counties agreed to include that. Portion in the uh, in the overall bridge construction. The fine item. So that twenty-five thousand dollars goes away. So then that uh. Takes us down to seventy-one thousand eight hundred dollars. And then with the twenty-thousand dollar. Contribution that they're uh, they're making. For the right-of-way acquisition. So that puts our total exposure at fifty-one eight. Oh, I think.
Ten thousand. Be an estimate, but. We want. Better. We want to try to make it work.
Yeah. Plane is probably the least expensive that we're going to get and still get the project done. Just wanted to ensure the board was comfortable.
Anything we need to do in terms of action?
Yeah.
Just.
Thanks for working that out. It sounds like it. This is amicable. It's gonna be.
Yeah, I think it's the best we could hope for. Trying to trying to work with the counties, not another.
The tender bet. Doug, obviously, we've had more conversations as we closer with them, going to be using that area and whatnot. You know, are we going to do the whole photos before, after, or other ideas that we have with that too?
Yeah, there's also that opportunity to try to.
Try to see if we go.
Outside the contract. Yeah, with getting some additional, whether it's the driveway or. Something else, some additional work um. That maybe that we may want. Just for the the use of the property during construction. Um, next I have Roberts Road Bridge. Um, the county has provided us with their sixty percent plans. This was a couple of weeks ago after we asked for them. Um, could you pull them up, please? Which shows a turnaround. At the end of Roberts Road and then also. Has the turning movement templates. So what they're looking to. Acquire is about a twenty-five by seventy-five. Foot strip of additional land. It's the little, it's right at the bottom where where my. Where the arrow is. The the dark line above that where the thirty-five is. That runs that way. And that's the existing right-of-way line. So the dark box. That extends all of that. Would be the the new. Right-of-way that they would need to construct the project.
There are construction easements beyond that. What's the?
There's temporary construction easements that they would need.
Get down.
To, yeah, to to. Construct the project and also to remove the bridge. Um. But we think that this is, we've asked that they keep it as small as possible, and we think they have. Not sure that we can do any any smaller. Um, the next, the other file might shows uh, turning movements. That they ran the turning uh, templates. This is for a fire truck. So there is. Kind of a multi-k turn. Uh, just to get a turnaround. And then the other is for trash trucks, which is. A more simpler movement.
So that's akin to a pile truck.
Correct.
School bus.
That's really my other question. But what other, this is really, we're gonna not factor.
Yeah, it's not like we're gonna have a high volume of traffic because we got.
Exactly. It's just, I mean, it covers the the minimum. And allows people to, you know, whoever they get. Down that road to an opportunity and a and a place to turn around without. Using utilizing someone's driveway or getting off in the grass.
Are there dead-end signs that are gonna be as?
There's no plus effect from that.
Because they can't turn around. Right. That's why they don't.
Yeah, the stop is either at the end and on give that create or.
Yeah, you generally never want a school bus to back up. Still have the little hard and fast rules. So even when you put that there, you won't.
Mark's.
Right.
Can you go back up? How close is your driveway? So I wanted to ask.
The other five.
Yeah, is the show or those are shows?
All the way to the left.
Here. So what I I guess my first. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the proper.
My first question, what is the point of having circle? If nobody else lives down. There's trees there that replanted. And it looks like that, I think, out of the tree there, my fence is there. Your look at your other picture, that that. Square that they went with is literally right up against my fence.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, get back in. You draw. It shows the electric fence.
That's an easement. That'll just be an easement. Yeah. The actual road would be up there where the thirty-two is. That's the edge of the road up. Edge of the turn. And then it would be a hill down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be a hill down here. There's a twenty-four inch tree.
The tree.
They remain. They're 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 dropping, taking. The twenty-four inch diameter tree.
I I really appreciate you coming here, especially definitely we want to hear your questions. I want just to say as well, you know, this is something that we've talked to with the county. First of all, it's frustrating if we can't get that bridge work. That would be the ideal thing. You know, so we wouldn't have to worry about this. Um, obviously, they, we have to have some kind of turnaround. We want to make this as best as possible for everybody, but as safe as possible too. So I'm definitely glad that you came and I. Want to hear your questions. And I'm glad we can keep at least two of those trees, but that must be so frustrating. So. What other questions?
But your your comment earlier, you said, why did I have to go past your driveway? Would you rather the circle at your driveway?
Well, the neighbor wants the circle. Mr. Martin.
Well, we, this is something we need to do, because there is no way to turn around then. Rather not than turn around in your driveway or the neighbor's driveway.
And I agree with Mr. Sharon. I think the best way to discuss it is to hear your input as well, but understand, you know, what was best and. We figured that that would be.
Lot of trees that are down by that bridge. I don't speed, get back road, and I don't want to speed. So with all this.
Is there any other buffer we could put in there?
Didn't look through the entire plan set, see whether there was a landscape. Planning a a plan as part of that, but we can look into that, because we've asked the county to do some other things. As part of this, like one of the things that I was concerned about with an asphalt pavement there, that the stream, you know, it floods occasionally. Um, and we've had occasion in other floodwaters where floodwaters have actually peeled the roadway up. Because the water gets between the the layers of the road and lifts it. You know, we've asked that they install a basically a concrete curve. Flushed with the pavement, not a not a not a raised curve. To protect that. So then, and each floodwater is going to hit the concrete that extends eighteen inches down. And protect that interface between the stone and the asphalt. So we won't have, uh, hopefully won't have any issues with it, uh. Buckling during uh, during floodwaters. So planting a few trees, I don't think would be out of the question for for the county. You can absolutely ask.
So with that, with the flood situation, our whole fence was under water last flood week. The whole five feet. It took blacktop. It took everything in through it in our field, our neighbor's field, down the river, everything. It was a huge environmental. Um. If it happens again, that that circle would.
Well, that's why I've asked that they protect it with a concrete curve on the upstream side. Of the uh, of the uh, the asphalt, the paving. So that any floodwater that comes from the top of the the page down. So any floodwaters that that are running. Potentially in fact, that road are basically going to hit a concrete barrier before they hit the road. And then that will should protect the the pavement from being filled up, lifted and carried down the street.
What's the elevation change here with the fence? Been down that way. The huge drop there.
I didn't. What's the elevation change to where the road surface, the uh, the fence there? How far, how much of a drop would that be? I mean, authentic question.
Probably know better than. It's that much? Yeah, it's probably more pronounced when you get closer. To the stream.
Got you right here.
But as as you get closer to the property, to your barn. The barn is actually higher than. And then it just, it's an apple kind of drainage area and it turns into a swale and then it actually gets deeper as you get closer to the to the creek.
Now, Doug, is the county is looking for additional feedback? Any feedback right now?
That's what, yeah, they gave us the the plans, so.
It's what they have. They're asking.
For our inputs, so they can.
So.
Their designs.
So I think definitely we want to look to see about the buffering, you know, for feedback. See that there. Um. Any other, any other concerns that you have that we can bring to the county? Obviously, the concern is, you know, we don't want, you don't see this here. Understand. We have to have somewhere to turn around. So if you want to make this as doable as possible, but definitely want to know any other concerns that we can bring to the county or questions or. Is, as you know, Supervisor Sharon said, is it more preferable somewhere else? Anything else that they have to?
So the Pigo was down and though with their eye, they're moving right like that. All of this construction.
Is that related to that, that you're aware?
I don't. But can you go back to the area?
Going down.
They're on the left. Are there any utility poles as you get closer to the bridge? Do you?
Uh, there is one on our side. It's actually. Right there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one. That actually is a one we're copying. So I'm assuming that hole would have to be.
I would think that one, but I'm not sure what's on it.
That would be. It might be why they have to down them further.
Maybe. So I don't think they're.
Yeah.
That big huge tree.
Yeah, I don't want it to. But what the? Unfortunately, I suppose it seemed like the. Area widens out. With the term.
And I think part of the, and I don't know, you know, how, what gave me that conclusion, but one of the things that I know our experience more looking is to try to do what's least impactful for you, which is why they would put it back there in that regard, in the mindset that they would think, oh, you know. Hopefully not bother them. This slide is great to hear. But. That's, I think, might be the mindset. But I think it is past that goal too.
Daniel, now that we have plans, is it, would it, would it be helpful if we met out and checked out their property?
I.
To look at.
Kind of show up, show.
Way out.
And any other neighbors that might have.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because there is a sign and drop.
Yeah.
It's a great. Being flat.
Well, it's shown that way.
Yeah.
That works out. Yeah, because that bridge isn't going back in. During grading. That's what.
The majority of it is going to be sending the right of way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is a piece like where that little. Kind of square of all turner is, that they will need to acquire right-of-way property. In order to construct the plan as it's proposed.
I always notice that temporary construction easement on there, but seem to be more.
Yeah, temporary construction easements aren't uncommon. It's just to allow them root to construct and then to do grading and then they will. Uh, you know, stabilize and seed and restore everything. So that it's acceptable once they're completed.
So this is going to be blacktop. I'm assuming.
A portion of.
A portion of it.
Portion of.
Yes.
Just so that the circle was blacktop. And then they'll come back out on the dirt.
Correct. The rest of the road will remain.
From the main way.
A uh, stone road, a gravel road.
So hopefully deter people from going down there, not knowing they're to turn around.
Are there additional signs that say no outlet and all that for the final configuration? I know there is now.
Uh, didn't look at the plans that closely, but yeah, we'll look at the signs.
Just make sure it's signed appropriately.
They put one on top of all. There's no outlet.
Yeah, it's probably something.
I think these are great things to take to start. Uh, you'll see what we'll see, we'll see what we can get from a meeting on site. I really appreciate your feedback. And again, I I thank you for your patience, understanding. Such a question too. It's gotta be.
We thank you.
For you. Yeah, it's, it's gotta be frustrating when you're in. Yeah, that's why it's important that you're here. So.
Any other questions while while we have you? All right. So we'll get you guys get together out there in a field, take it from there.
And don't hesitate to speak out to the staff.
In reference to your guide rail, uh, traffic safety out there. Together, yeah. Temporary fix. It it's sticking out.
I feel like the last two times saw it differently. So. Yes, I can figure it straight up. I saw that.
It's essentially two weeks later, it's down again.
It wasn't even two weeks. Yeah, it was a couple of days.
No, it's it's getting.
Yeah, and we we did it a couple of days. Adjusting, no, no traffic on there at all. Absolutely. Definitely. We're definitely pushing. It's gotta be. Thank you for bringing that to attention, Doug.
The feast of purpose of the. Don't start. Return's come. All right. Anything else for Doug? Moving on.
Our twenty twenty-four road program, uh, Cape Seal is going to start the first week in July. With the second uh, phase of that process, about ten days behind. Um, others are going to be sent or process being sent to all the affected property owners. Uh, base repairs, the Nova Chip and the other paving. Looking at late July or August at this point. Um, grants, our Arling grant that we applied for for the school flashers. Did not qualify. And that said, it didn't provide enough uh, safety benefit.
Good to know. School zones are no longer a safety issue.
Especially one that's got an antiquated uh, mast arm. You know. Uh, yeah, it didn't really. I think if there were no school zone, no flashers there, then. It would have obviously carried more weight, but since there are existing flashers. And which one?
Middle school. Middle school made valid. Oh. Honestly, Bridget has the antiquated bill.
Luckily, both, both are dated. The pole is the concern at the middle school. Because of the age of that.
Yes.
To the topics program. So.
Just some department activities. We did a considerable amount of basic repairs for the Cape Seal and Nova Chip roads. Uh, don't allow work in our parks in the township building here. Um, continuing roadside basin bowling. Uh, waiting for the electric for the cameras at Alford Park because it was out. Couldn't complete their work and they're scheduled to come back, I believe, next week. Uh, we hosted a PSAT's flag certification training. For new employees. Uh, we're working on today, we're working on replacing a storm pipe on Yoder Road. Um, this is the. Near the corner of Yoder and Cult. There is a. Three each whale and pipes that run under Yoder Road that carried from their rear properties. Uh, that front on Fault Road on the TriConia. That carried uh, water down to the the creek, you know, down past.
Is that the VMS sign that's out there? What's closed Thursday? Wasn't Thursday?
Yep. So there's three pipes there. There's two that are uh. Two-twined elliptical pipes. That are, the bottom is essentially just rotted out. Um. And then there's a third that runs from inlet to inlet within the roadway and then continues to discharge into creek. That's the one we're replacing. The others, we uh, we were looking at doing something. We met with the property owner there on the corner. Um, and he has a large tree. That's basically roots wrapped around the pipe. So he's concerned that we're going to.
You know, this tree.
Impact his tree, which there's probably some. Bolidity to that. Um, so we're looking at alternatives at this point, uh, trying to do some kind of uh, trenchless technology.
Slip lining or something.
Yeah, um, it's. Thought about cured in place, but because it doesn't have any bottom to it, you really need a fairly. Uh, intact post-pipe to do the cure-in-place. So we're looking into a process where it's basically slip lining with. High-density polyethylene, smoothboard interior and exterior. And then you're just sections that snap together. And then you pull the rope and then you just wrap the annular, annular space. To make it a a complete solid system. So we're looking into that, so that we can not have to dig.
This owner had the concerns before from. The development up there in Franconia, correct?
Correct.
I think it's be our best interest to try to work around that tree as best we can.
Well. I tried to argue. I think our pipe was here first. And his argument was, well, the township planted the tree because. When the development was being done, the development gets disappeared and the township stepped in and finished the work and part of that was planting the trees.
Actually, we like trees. Actually, went out with Doug yesterday to meet the property owner. I was going to say thanks to Doug for handling the situation well. And I think, I think we have a good fit. But I think the homeowner is happy with the response. Great. Hope all goes well today.
Yeah, we don't foresee any problems. So that's good. That's all that I have.
Excellent. Any questions, further questions for Mr. Jones?
Just the, on the, um, I know you're gonna send out the pamphlets for the Cape Seal as you've done in the past. Does that kind of have a QR code on it again?
Absolutely.
Excellent. I think that we're.
Yeah, we'll put our signs up that have the Q bar QR code on it as well. On all the streets that we're going.
For anybody watching doesn't know what that is, it's a link to show exactly the work that is being done. So people understand the process. How the road will temporarily look.
Yeah, the link to a picture video contractor that explains the process. Actually shows how they do it and what they do. But. It's interesting. It's very important.
Something, yeah, communication committee would love in the future to have, Lower Southford. Their employees. We see a lot of videos that we looked around for, but most of them. Are advertising an inventory year or a project that does it. So we wouldn't want to share that with the town team per se. We found some good videos. That's worth. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Moving on to Chief Medwin.
Yes, sir. Uh, in reference to the modifications, uh, called. Solicitor Department. Ordinance, if that is ready for July. Lot of. Antiquated language. Reference. That's listening. Signs and. Nothing in there specific. Don't know all the line that people. Just says any sign. So.
But we could still do the sign off the sign up if they could print it out themselves.
Yeah. Yeah, if they wanna do the. Options out there, but we can make hours available. Doesn't have to be an official township. Issue sign. I mean, we can still even offer the claims if if that was. The board was interested in doing so.
I like having the option for those, so when I read it, I interpreted it as hypothetically, you could print out no soliciting on your printer, put it up there and that's.
All the time.
So that that definitely keeps it simple, but right, there's gotta be somebody in.
Like. All right, we'll have a. And then that will be updated every year. Resolution. Be resolved, it'll be.
I think we should definitely have some available. Assume, can't assume everybody is able to.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, just an update, we're currently working on. A grant to state center. And a code for ten additional body cameras purchased. And a few years ago, fifty fifty grand. Same. Like that, basically. So we're trying to stagger those and and for now. Uh. There's or swapping that out, shift. Uh, of country. We had fifteen officers out there Friday. To five. So. Okay. Big Senator's office.
Yeah.
I remember appreciating your timing last time, you told us to hang tight for two months so we could get that grant. That was a month or two, it so definitely worthwhile, appreciate that.
Thank you. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the chief? Moving right along, uh, building and zoning, Mr. B.
Mr. Sherman, so for this month, we have twenty eight permits that were issued. Will change from last month, we're back down to speed for some reason, it may have a lot of. Um, so in the upcoming planning commission meeting, we have three ninety two overdrive, which is a those. Two lot subdivision. And. We also have an upcoming zoning hearing board. So it's not in July, actually signed a waiver for time limitation, so it's gonna be in August. August the eighth. And that is for one ninety three Kenzie Road, it's a detached accessory two car garage. And in general, it's a plain vanilla application, it's just a side yard setback. Uh, variance request. Um, it's where the existing driveway currently is, where currently the property is two cars. He just wants to put a two car garage there. So we will be seeing that planning commission level. So bring that to you at the board level. Most likely in July. But potentially in August. Excuse me. Uh, four eighty Harley's will hike, uh, new catch plan coming in, but not for review. So they just wanted to amend the plan and. Present to the planning commission again to address some of their comments. And it again, it's still in sketch plan. Phase, so it's not a required phase, but they just wanna keep discussing it with the township to find to it before they take it to the next level. And then we're continuing to work on the village compartmental district ordinance amendments, so that is moving forward at a pretty good pace. That is all I have for you.
Thank you, any questions for uh?
Mike, how was it this with that zone hearing?
So it was. April of twenty two. We had a brand new house sign.
So it's been over two years. I guess, I guess. Yeah, and I I know I talked to the board about this before I brought it up, but how many times, I have curiosity, have we had, have you had or told somebody that variant would be required by zoning hearing board in that time?
I mean, it's vital.
Yeah, and and I'll explain this everybody, I mean, I know we haven't had one, they come as, you know, since I've been in here, they come as needed, but I think one of the reasons that Lower Southford doesn't have many zoning hearing conferences. The precedent that we have set. And by that, I know at least of one time where, you know, we had somebody request something and. No, we can't do this, so. We sent one ninety six, the property I'm referring to recently, we sent something that says a variant is required by the zoning hearing board. Yet a few months later, next thing you know, that's when they changed, you know, our our, and I just, I feel like we have a precedent that is so far set that further with this one, for example. And I told you gentlemen, at the planning commission meeting, two months before we officially changed it. They said that they already had a lease signed with the property. Now, again, that's a precedent that we set by not having these, I would like to know when somebody requests something that. Might say, hey, if you write back to them, a variant is required by the zoning hearing board, I would like to know because. I'm not in the construction business, but you know, in my business, I'm not gonna book an entertainment act if I don't have access to that. I mean, that's my reputation, that's everything, I'm not gonna do that unless I know what's gonna happen, or unless that's the precedent set. I just think that that's something that I brought up before, this is just a great example to show that. We should be aware of this, you know, make sure that we have people go through, I've talked to the staff, everything's being done properly, it just. It just doesn't seem right that we're not following that procedure, I would like to see more zoning hearing board meetings, and again, we don't know when they're coming in per se, but. You know, I hope that if we have letters or something, that somebody does something.
I would say, and Mike correctly, but I'd say most of the hearing board, the most the time that conversation takes place. It's in a situation where a homeowner is doing some work, it's not necessarily, I mean, I think that. The land development zoning hearing board. Was are probably few and far between, this is mostly zoning hearing board, and in the past, zoning hearing board. Would would be. And it was partly the way it was handled by staff and that in. In the past was. This doesn't appeal, this doesn't uh, uh, uh. Can. Onto the zoning, you have to go to the zoning hearing board, and that was the only option that was given to the residents. The difference that happens now is that Mike does sit down with the residents and go through the process that. You know, that you would require, and we'll use the example of the next zoning hearing board that's scheduled, a side yard setback. And. And if you. The only way you'd get out of a zoning hearing board is to push the the project, you know, another five feet. In some cases, like in the current situation, that that's maybe not possible. For the resident, but in other cases, it has been possible, they said, oh, okay, I'll just move it. And so that's why there haven't been as many because. Mike's handling of a lot of these situations is different than the previous zoning officers and. Or the previous zoning officer did not take. To sit with. Pick the people coming in and talk about what they wanted and how they could get. Through the process without necessarily going to the zone here, because that's a large cost.
Yeah.
No, it's thousands of dollars, it's a almost a thousand to that thousand dollar application fee and a fifty dollar application fee. Plus, you have to have engineered plans, stand by an engineer, you have to have site plans, all sorts of things that. That the picture starts going up and up and up.
Own attorney, you have to have standing, like there's a, there is a requirement, so to put that onus on folks unnecessarily, I I don't.
Well, what are other options, and that's, that's the difference between now and before is that Mike's discusses additional option. And if you may, if you move this, if you make it smaller, if you do, if you put the addition on the back of the house opposed to the side of the house. You know, things like that. That. That have changed the process. And and that, then correct me if I'm wrong, that's. The vast majority of.
It is.
Reasons we have zoning hearing board.
Right.
Hearing in the first place.
Yeah.
We have, we have quite a few.
Twenty six, probably an outlier in the in our zoning hearing board.
Ninety six with those.
And 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 I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback, understand gentlemen as well too, what I do, since I've had this capacity, I watch as many other board meetings as I can, I mean, I I can tell you just from. Keeping up on their meetings, Van Conia, twelve minutes, they have zoning. Guarantee the next one, I'm sure, just following their meetings. I see them happening more often, they used to happen, and again, I use one ninety six as a sample, because that that bothered me, you know, it bothered me to the uh. They took over twenty minutes of our planning commission time when it wasn't even officially passed, and then to just say there and say, we're in a holding pattern, don't worry, we already have a lease signed. At least before it's official, that's that's a risk I don't like, that's a precedent that.
That's a risk that they.
That's a risk they take, they take, but again, that's, I mean, that's something I wouldn't do, but we have, it's either, I wouldn't do that unless I knew or I had a precedent, and I don't like having that precedent of. Ah, don't worry, we don't need to spend that money, we don't need to see if there's a hardship, we'll just change the rules, that's, so that's the one that obviously stands out, I don't know how many others we had, and. That I found out by doing my research on that, again, I found the letter, that's the original request, and then the follow up was, well, you'll have to go to the hearing. And that never happened. I do appreciate the explanation, I hope you guys understand my concern, but you know, that's not, that's not the direction I think we should be moving in the future, you know, if somebody comes in, no, don't worry about, have to go to the hearing board, no problem, just.
Well, it's a zoning hearing board, it's again, it's ninety. Five percent of the cases, zoning hearing board isn't the only option for me. And the difference. In Lower Southford, and and I don't know what they do in Franconia, I don't do it, Tom, that's it.
And they're.
Is that they're talks through the issue with it, because even for homeowners. And again, you know, going through this process isn't cheap.
Yeah.
You know, and and in in particular, and we have a very. Stringent. Zoning hearing board, and and some of these things that. Escalate the cost are only happen here. Other places don't necessarily require, you know, an engineered plans uh, for things, I mean, and they require it for everything, these are the rules that our zoning hearing board set up. And and it requires a lot of extra money, and again, to these people who might wanna put, we put it on a deck, I mean, you wanna put on a deck that costs ten thousand dollars and you're gonna have to spend. Two or three thousand dollars just to go to the government hearing. Where we can say, if you move the deck, or if you shape it this way, you don't have to go to this.
No, and understand my concern isn't so much for decks, but so much for.
No, no, I know, but I wouldn't. But 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 the reason for the zoning hearing board to me. Ninety five percent of the time are for those type of things.
Kind of to see if it's a hardship to the property owner, whether it be something to be allowable to again.
Well, then there, but there is no hardship if there's no reason for the going to the zoning hearing, I think that's, that's the, what we've decided to do here is to sit down with people and talk through. The situation because. Again. Going to the zoning hearing board for a lot of people, and again, for a resident. Is going to add thousands of dollars to the box. And again, that that's one ninety six and that type of situation is a. A, I I can't even think of another one. In the past couple of years where that's happened again.
And I'm not as familiar with land development. That same, when that same person did something. Came just before me with the sign, whether they came for a zoning hearing board first, I don't know, that's kind of what I was asking, you know, how many times, that was before I was in here.
Right, and it was before Mike was here.
Right.
Uh, so.
I appreciate the feedback.
This is, I mean, the thing is, most zoning hearing board applications aren't those type of application. Most zoning hearing board applications, if it's wanna put a shed up, wanna put a deck on their house, or or doing an addition to their house, and. And if they, if we could talk to them about, hey, listen, if you make it. Trinket down a little bit. Move it over here, then you don't fall into the need for a variance. And you don't, aren't gonna be paying those extra fees. For the hearing itself, yes, you know, we just. I think as a, as a administration and a and a staff review, that this is better for the resident. And for every, because you're not even, you're negating the need for a variance, and you know, I don't know that having variants is a heaven's own. Board hearings. More often is necessarily a good thing. It really depends on the issue, sometimes, again, like the situation with the fellow with the garage. He wants that, he wants it there, it's a fairly de minimis. A request and that it's like a five foot difference, the side yard setback. You know, if that's what he wants. You know, we have that discussion, we say, hey, if you do this, you might not have to go. But if they, if they, you know, push back and say this is what I want, then okay, but you have.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? We're building and zoning. Moving right along, Mikowski.
Yes, the first item under the manager reported the firefighter tax credit ordinance. Let me just finally receive a. A draft ordinance from the uh, solicitor's office, this is based off of county. Uh, ordinance, which is very similar to what Patfield Township has in place.
Has Patfield had it in place and?
They've had it for a couple of years.
And have they found it to be effective for them?
Um. It's not as. That good. As they'd like, but I think because, because there is some. Bookkeeping. Uh, that is required by the fire company, really depends on if the fire company is keen embrace on. Wanting to do this.
Do they have a point system similar?
Yes, similar, similar system, I think basically the fire company, they're, was ever running it. Is key, have to go through the process. Unfortunately.
There it is. I, so basically what would happen if this, there would be two options, either a earnings and tax credit. Or a real estate tax credit, you're not gonna tax credit. Uh, would be a five hundred dollar credit or up to a five hundred dollar credit. Uh. And the earning tax would be a percentage of, I mean, the real estate tax would be a percentage of their real estate. Uh, based on the number of points. Uh. With the, if you claim more than a. Twenty five percent tax credit on your real estate. Uh. You'd have to, you'd have to have fifty percent of your points would have to be emergency response calls or training. So. Or I guess intense. Uses. And you know, we talking earlier about, you know, why, why do you have those type of. Things in there that oftentimes, and I know this for me, because I was involved by company, you have a membership list, which is. Quite long, but you actually have active firefighters, which is substantially shorter than that.
Quite sure.
So to just give out. A credit. To be on the rolls, I don't know, is fair to everyone who's participated.
I think one of the languages said that there's a percentage that had to be responding calls as well.
Correct, yeah, that that real estate one, I think if it was over twenty five percent, or you had seventy percent of it had to be response calls or training site, but you would actually have to show up.
And and I think it's great, I, me, my grandfather was a chief, I have a couple of those who are chiefs, former chiefs and former firefighters, this is a lot for the family and all, and it's a great way we can show. You know, appreciation and help get people, maybe encourage people to give it a go.
Right.
People might like it a lot more than they think, so.
I will have to kind of just talk to the solicitor about. Uh. The. Appeal review process, eligibility and appeal review process. Uh, within December fifteenth day, only because our.
That's good for us.
Our schedules. Fleshway. So December fifteenth may. Be too soon. So maybe we change it to the second, you know, meeting in September, second work session, but whatever date that is, I mean, just word it differently. But still keep it in December, but December fifteenth. If we might not be able to do it by that.
Right.
Makes sense.
So if that's good, we could uh, put this on for authorization to advertise and go on.
Any further questions on it? Anyone?
No, one, one thing I noticed, though. I just haven't noticed it before, because sometimes it was saying him or. I haven't noticed that before, like instead of like applicant or injured person, for example.
Again, it's who probably takes from the county.
Yeah. That's, that's the only thing I've. Just to update it.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting, I looked in our, I looked in our history of uh, where this is, just because I haven't noticed it, I'm like, I don't know what is acceptable legally, and uh. Ironically, it's the solicitor thing that had the most in it that we have, the pre, the original one, so.
Right.
I'm like this. No, I think it's great, I think it's great.
It's that the schools on board.
This would be just township.
Yeah.
Earning.
Our, our earning. Our.
Oh, we could write to the school district and tell them to consider such a thing.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Very.
Um, and I know, I know we could do some. On the agenda is a request for fireplace assistance for the uh, get like July fourth break. And we want to get this before the fireplace. Prior to July third. Why we have it up. Today's agenda. So if uh, someone can make a. Okay.
We've been second in all the favors there, I oppose A, motion carries.
And just quickly, uh, give you an update on the special projects coordinator.
And just quickly, uh, give you an update on the special project coordinator, we are finishing up interviews this week.
Alright.
Hopefully we'll have. How many applicants, sorry, how many applicants we get? Well, how many applicants we have? Probably about seventy, how many applicants that were. Uh.
Of interest.
Of interest to us, were probably about twelve, I mean, they were, you know, it gets out on the internet, you just get. From all sorts of places, I just, uh, don't necessarily consider, but, uh. But, you know, I think, and Doug can confirm this, we're actually quite pleased with the, the. Five or so, six, seven, eight interviews, I mean, they've all been really good candidates and.
A whole.
People aren't blowing up with a really strong candidate.
Awesome, excellent.
That's all I have.
Very good, do we have need this morning for an executive session?
Do not.
Do, do not, so with that, take a motion to adjourn. Second, so we've been second in all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
opposing aye. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.